The planning board meeting. First on the agenda is reorganization.
I'd like to move that we just leave it the way it is.
Is there a second?
Until we get to replacement for Jay or?
Well, I think the replacement would take the PVPC. Liaison or whatever, however that's termed. Unless you want the PVPC.
I'll take the PVPC.
You wanna be here?
Yeah.
If we leave everything as we have it and then we'll vote on that and then we'll nominate Lil for PVPC rep or whatever it's called.
Well, Jim, you wanna be chair?
Not particularly if Glenn's gonna wants to hang on to it.
I don't mind hanging on to it.
You have one more year left on yours?
Two.
Two. Okay.
Are you trying to write it me already or?
No, no, I'm just thinking.
Well, let me ask you, would you like to be chair?
Not until we would get somebody else to take the minutes. You can't be chair and do the minutes. You can't do two at the same time.
You are correct.
You are correct.
Although I do have a suggestion for an advertisement for that. Might as well advertise. Nobody knows.
We'll talk about that shortly to know a few names, but.
So, we have a motion for Bob.
So, well, let's, or we gotta go seat by seat. I'll make a motion or to not make Glenn as chair.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Anybody oppose? I will nominate Mr. Jim Tronkey again as vice chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anybody oppose? I will also nominate Bob Sheen for treasurer.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Anybody? All in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay.
I'll nominate Lil as secretary.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? The ayes have it. Okay.
I would also like to nominate Lil to be our interim PVPC representative from the board.
Is Lil looking to be interim or do you want it?
I would, I would just take it for you anyway.
Oh.
I could learn something.
I strike that motion. I nominate Lil to be our PVPC rep.
I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay.
Covers it.
That it does. So, I know there's been some names talked about for since Jay Joyce has resigned. So, we'll need a person to fill that vacant position. But I, the person I know showed interest was Jen Curran. She actually sent me an email asking me about it. Something she would be interested in. I'd actually recommend that she when it comes to a meeting and sits down and talks to us. More or less why she wants to be part of it as well. For one thing, give her an idea too what we do here as well to make sure that's something she wants to do.
That way we get to, see, we all get to see the person if we don't know the person.
Absolutely. That's, that's, that's what I want to come to the board.
Traditionally, what's happened is this board makes a recommendation to the select board. And then there's a joint meeting to vote on who, who gets appointed.
Who will fill the unexpired term for one year until the next election cycle.
So, but going back to the other piece there, I'd like to see the people who are interested in it so we can see them as a group and sit down and talk to them, see if, you know, what they're, if they're interested truly in it. Let them see what we do here and make sure that it's something they wanna do as far as a commitment as well.
Yeah, same. I know there are a couple others, I believe. So, I think, I think, you know, as the board should, should take a look at their letter of intent or resume or whatever they decide they want to present with us, present to us and then, and then we should look at it and see who's the most qualified. And go from there. That way they would be fair about it, not just appointing someone for the sake of appointing somebody.
So, when do we do that?
I would recommend we do it in our next meeting.
All, all of them?
Interview? Or put names out on the table?
We, if we could put names out on the table now so that way we can invite the people to our next meeting if they wish to be part of it and if they still have interest of being part of the board. And if for some reason they can't make it, then we can maybe postpone it to a following meeting, but every meeting we go without someone.
It would, yeah, and we don't know when we're gonna be, uh, someone's gonna address us with a, with a plan that's gonna require five attendees. So, special.
Or the, the, the super majority, you mean?
That's right.
So, we should get that done soon.
So, at the very least, we should, those that are interested should at least provide us with letters, resume.
I guess I did and I could reach back out to Jen Curran. That's, I know she had sent me an email asking me about the, the open seat and she had spoken to Jay Joyce as well.
That's good.
You're pointing Jennifer Curran's name? Are you, where's, we're submitting names?
Well, I'm, I'm submitting her name because she sent an email to me and we got, as the chair had asked me about it. She had also sent it to Chris Martin as well, so. That's how I know she's interested in it, so.
It's the first time we've had multiple individuals interested in the seat, so that's good.
That's good. So, I think if we have those names and those names come out at this meeting, it gives us the opportunity to, we can send them an email if we have their email address or we can send them a letter, you know, that we, we know you are interested or showed interest in being part of the planning board. If you still are, you know, please come to our next meeting.
Okay.
Who wants?
Rob.
Rob. Does Rob have a last name?
No, just Rob. We're gonna send out to a lot of Robs. Rob Shouven.
C-H-A-U-V-E-A-N?
I think it's Iron.
Iron.
Okay, and Bob?
I honestly don't have anybody that, at this point.
Okay.
How about you?
Nope. Nobody that I know.
Anybody else?
No, I thought you had somebody else was, was a third, so, so there's still, that's good, two candidates there.
I don't think so.
But I'd like to do too for our next year is see if, again, look to see if we can find a, someone that can take the minutes so it frees up Lil to be more part of the meeting versus kind of do both.
Yeah, it'd be interesting if we could get involved with the high school, you know, such as Kevin O'Grady's daughters on the marijuana ad hoc committee. I don't know, maybe she graduated this year.
She did graduate, but that's something I was thinking about as well, maybe speaking to some of the guidance counselors at the school. We obviously have to probably wait till September if the school is back in session. Let's see if someone wants to take part of it because it's, for one thing, it's, you know, it looks good on some of the resumes for college as well, so.
And as well, somebody that might be able to grab a laptop and run, do what Jay was doing with the. I mean, certainly can't expect a recording secretary to do both.
No.
I could do the, the Jay thing.
You could, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's easy, if I wasn't taking the minutes.
Right. Okay. Well, would we, there's nobody we can contact now at the school? I would think there's somebody we can contact that they could reach out to.
We could probably contact the principal.
Okay.
Well, this is the draft of the, a potential ad for.
Thank you.
Like to put in the sentinel or something? Because I assume we're going to pay them.
You assume, right.
Could also put it on the, the.
G cam?
Yeah.
The what?
G cam.
What about G cam?
Could also put it on G cam.
Oh.
Yeah.
But I didn't know if there was, I mean, at the end I say, or email blah blah. I didn't wanna put all that on Kathy. She's got more than enough to do now.
But it, it, it should be going through that office anyways.
Okay, so put Kathy Leonard, okay.
It would be good to give her a heads up though.
Yeah, oh, let her know. And besides, she'll need to place the ad.
Before we, yeah.
Or have her place the ad anyway, so.
Looks good to me.
Cross associated with it, so.
And gonna have to figure out what the salary's gonna be or the hourly rate.
Yeah, I think we already.
Do we, do we have?
Chris already, Chris already figured that out.
He did? What is it?
It was paying you it.
It was what?
Was it, well, you may be paid fifteen?
Yeah. Okay.
I, I believe that.
I mean, we can run it by.
Chris again, just double check, but it's, it's, uh, like, it's, it's, there's no taxes taken out, things like that. It's more of a stipend. Yeah, so. But we can run it by Chris again to see what the.
Okay, so I will contact Kathy Leonard first and let her know about it and make sure she's okay with being the email connection. And then ask her to post it. I don't know how, when you have, what the cutoff dates are for the sentinel and what have you. So, we wanna put it in the sentinel in a reminder?
But we can do both by, who I would.
And the ones at Belcher Town Publication, the other ones at South Ably.
Right.
While the, both publishers are at the same, but.
Right, but yeah. But they're both in Grammy, both people, I mean.
Yeah, and there's a lot of places where you don't see the two publications together to take. It's just one or the other.
Yeah, right, so.
But we don't wanna go into the big newspapers until.
I don't, I don't think we need to at all, so I think amongst ourselves, I, I would still say we reach out to the school as well because I think that's a.
So, who's got the connection there?
I'll reach out to the principal.
The principal or the superintendent?
Uh, I'll reach out to the principal first.
Of the high school?
Yes, so if he wants to go to superintendent, then I would.
One thing we're gonna need for this person to work with is a laptop.
Yeah, we can get that. I'll just get together with Jay and get the particulars and he can order it or I can order it.
Whatever you want. It's, it's gotta prove for us to get, so we just gotta pick out what we want.
Yeah, it only takes a couple days.
Okay, so what would you do when you're running the audio stuff or the visual stuff? Would you continue to use your own?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure we didn't need to.
Or, or also, I mean, sometimes a person, if you have someone taking the minutes, they can do it too. I know, what board is it? Conservation maybe?
Conservation does it.
Right, and they have said that the person taking the minutes does that too, so.
But are they taking the minutes on the computer?
Yes.
Yes.
And they're doing that other thing too?
We don't use it that often, I think, I mean.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I would question. I would, yeah, anyway, that's a lot to do.
I would agree.
Right, well, it depends. Yeah, I mean, you could, you could post something up and not have that, and have it the screen off the side typing something else.
Yeah.
Typically, typically with conservation and the meetings that I've watched, they bring up a site that they are discussing right then and there.
Right.
They're not going through code or bylaws, you know, flipping page to page.
Flipping, yeah.
You know, they've.
Well, in that case, yeah, that would be a little easier, but if you have to start looking up things and doing all that, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so we're okay to.
Did I see on the select board meeting that they wanted some verbiage from us regarding the draft marijuana or stuff?
Yes, yeah. That was something they were, they're looking for.
And what were they partic- particularly looking for?
I think there's more what we're, what we're looking to have in the, so, when we did the minutes, that we had to put in the minutes. I think it was to formalize it, so it's just not in the minutes.
What do we?
Cause we, we, we put the, what we were looking forward to, the bylaws, right? We had put that in our, that was in our minutes.
And that, that was being passed on to Al Wishart, chair of the ad hoc committee.
So, they're looking some, maybe a formal from the planning board to the select board.
That's what we said in our May fifteenth minutes.
So, it was formalized?
But it's in the minutes. It's, it's not formalized as far as from a letter from the planning board.
We have to do an actual letter?
I think that's what they're looking for, so they're just taking it out of the minutes. So, this is what we, this is what we're recommending.
Okay.
So, in other words, they wanna see it in the form in which the article would be written and, and in the form of how it would actually go into the bylaw.
But we don't know how the article would be written.
They'd wanna, they'd wanna see how it would go into the, to the bylaw as far as the.
The correct wording and such, so then it would have to be sent off to.
Pioneer Valley, which I thought they had somebody from Pioneer Valley doing this for them. Are they, you guys working with, with Larry on this?
That would be the, the bylaw, bylaw committee of the select board.
Yeah, I know, you're on the bylaw committee, aren't you?
No.
Oh, you're not?
No, he's on the marijuana committee. But not the marijuana bylaw.
Okay, so who's asking for this? The marijuana committee or the bylaw committee?
It was at the select board meeting, the bylaw, someone from the bylaw committee was there as well, so I think more it was the bylaw committee. Something was, they wanted something formalized that instead of just in our minutes.
But to the select or to the bylaw?
It's, it probably should be to the by, assume the bylaw committee because there are people that are, the committee's gonna be taking it.
But.
What are the, so what is this bylaw committee looking at?
All the bylaws, right? In town?
Yeah.
They're reviewing all the bylaws. That was what I heard. They've been doing that since last year, right?
They're looking at the, the zoning bylaws and the, the planning board bylaws?
Well, I think they're looking at any, any bylaws that have been brought forward to change or new bylaws. From my understanding.
I. I wonder if this is something that we should get off to Susan ASAP to see if she can propose some verbiage that would potentially meet what we're looking for. But the problem is, is we've got a drop dead date that we have to have this done by for presentation and advertising and everything. And that's, that's what we're up against, isn't it Glenn?
Yeah, we're up against the dates.
Right.
Cause we're not that.
I kept hearing June twenty first, isn't that one the? She's been really good getting back to me from the other stuff we've asked.
June twelve. Well, that's not.
Well, that's today.
I thought we only did this piece to give to the marijuana committee who was going to flesh it out a little more and add whatever they wanted, what they thought.
I thought so as well.
Cause I thought, I thought they were working with Pioneer Valley.
Well, is Mr. Wishart in the building?
I don't know.
No, I don't.
But I, they did the one, the main thing was to have something formalized that we were sending versus something out of our minutes. Because they didn't want us to take something from our minutes. They wanted something formalized and I can find out who actually we should be sending it to. That's easy enough for a phone call. That was the main thing.
So, they want the, they want saying, okay, here is what we proposed for a, a bylaw and this is where it'll go in the bylaws and in the chart, this is where it'll go?
Yes. So, whatever's on, they, they, it's, it's, so when I, it's in our minutes. They recognize it being in our minutes, but they're looking for something that gets to be formalized from the planning board saying, this is what we are recommending as a bylaw change.
Is that something you can find out tomorrow?
Yeah.
And if we have to meet again, we'll have to do it?
It, I mean.
Or if we can just pass this off to PVPC?
I think our minutes, our minutes is kinda state level.
Our minutes, uh.
It really needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah. So, I will call, I will call the chief tomorrow and then go from there. From there, I'll call.
So, you're calling Chief Wishart?
Yes.
To get a clarification on, um, if they were taking this a step further or?
I, I'm gonna find out who, who we're sending it to with the formalized piece. Because that was the question that was only in our minutes. So, looking for something from the planning board stating, this is what we are recommending.
Or is the ad hoc committee gonna formalize it?
Nothing gets formalized until after there's a hearing.
Right.
Right.
So.
But I say a, a, not formalized, a formal letter from us.
I see.
So, do we wanna involve Susan Westa or?
I think we end up involving her after.
After?
Because after we get the public input and everything, we're gonna have to put together. Just cause it's something that needs to be passed by the AG, so obviously we'll get her to work with us on that.
So, where does this bylaw committee come in then? Do they get involved in any of this?
I would believe so, but I mean, as far as presenting it to the town.
I don't know the steps.
Yeah.
I don't know what this bylaw committee was charged with, but as far as anything within our, I don't know as if they have any jurisdiction within our purview as far as the zoning.
I would agree.
That has, that typically has to go through us and then has to go to the town. It has to have a hearing and then has to be presented at town meeting. That's the way I understand it now.
Well, it is.
I thought, I, I thought this bylaw committee was looking at things outside zoning.
Outside the, it was pertaining to the marijuana stuff. Uh, no consumption?
No, no, no.
No?
The ad hoc committee for, is about the marijuana. Not the zoning, not the, the, they're, they're just the, the, um, the group that's seeking information from planning, from conservation, from border health, from, uh, uh, say, uh, police and, and so on. So, they're trying to gather all that information. They're not trying to make up zoning bylaws on their own. They've come to us for it.
Oh, that, right, but.
So, so this, this new bylaw committee, I'm not sure what they were charged with.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll find out more information on that. And it could be maybe the ad hoc committee, the chief of the board, they wanted something formal, but I think it was more that, and I remember Chris talking about it as well.
Should we consider tonight scheduling a meeting for Friday evening early? If, that way you can, if something needs to be done because we have to advertise two days or Kathy Kelly Regan has to post it for two days. And if we're up against the gun and we have to meet to, to meet the timeframe. Meeting.
They need, they need this for what? What's the, what's the, what's the date? What's, what is the significance of that date?
Yeah, I think the June, wasn't the June twenty first when the advertisement has to go on paper, the whole thing for the public hearing.
Right.
So, we need to have the information for the public hearing, what's gonna be.
If you take that and just break it out into, um.
Bullets? So, the whole thing here, just.
Break it out into bullets, cause they, they, they're each separate. They would be separate articles. Or, or at least prior to that, they would be separate discussions.
Should we schedule a meeting just?
Rather than one paragraph, looking at, looking at, it's looking at, like, one article.
We can, if we don't need it, we can just.
One bylaw, there's sep-, those, those would be separate bylaws.
So, they're probably looking to like an introductory thing or something, or maybe just the title and, and whatever A, B, C, D.
I just want to bullet it out.
Yeah, it makes sense.
It's our responsibility to, to, to do everything we can to meet this June twenty first deadline.
And I think.
You think that'll suffice?
Yeah, we bullet it out because they would each be a separate bylaw rather than having it as one paragraph.
And I'll say, we can find out tomorrow if we can and then we can always just meet.
That's enough, that's enough information for them to schedule a hearing.
Right.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Well, you said, I think it's just some formal from the planning board. This is what we are recommending.
And if you bullet it out and just do it like.
Right.
And then forward it to who?
I'm gonna find out tomorrow.
Okay.
I think it should go to the select board and the, and the, uh, the ad hoc.
And let them take care of it.
They're the ones that.
Where they're gonna direct it to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is fine. And like I said, it was more towards, more about, it was in our minutes, but it wasn't nothing formal from the planning board. Too many bunches. It was just in our minutes, that's all.
So, unofficial letterhead.
Yeah.
Shoot, but you're gonna find out for sure.
I'll find out for sure. But I would, I would say you can definitely address it to.
The select board and the ad hoc.
Yeah, ad hoc.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Saying this, the planning board. So, we're saying that the, um, just some sort of an introductory thing to that. You're not gonna say, here it is.
I'll just say this is what the planning board's recommending to, to, uh, for bylaw changes, zoning bylaw changes to address the, um.
Well, they wouldn't be changes, they'd be.
Additions.
Right.
Not whatever, changes or additions or whatever, however you wanna do it.
To address the marijuana.
Concerns in regards to cannabis retail, growing and distribution.
Yeah, retail, growing, distribution, yes.
Okay, I can get that ready and you, Glenn, can let me know.
Yes.
You need to sign it or?
I don't think, uh, only needs to be signed.
You can just put all our names on.
Yeah, it's from all of us.
And endorse by all of us.
Yeah.
It's in the minutes that, that it's been, but they're just looking for something a little more formal.
Well, like I said, I'll find out first thing in the morning. I'll call, I'll call the chief first thing in the morning. I'll call Chris Martin as well. We'll find out.
Um, either call me or send me an email and. Okay, so that's that one.
So, we're not gonna bother with trying to schedule a meeting?
Kinda like we need to.
If we find out tomorrow.
We still have time to do it, well, we already said what.
When, when they have the hearing, we should have Sue there with us.
The last I talked to Larry, he's the one handling all the marijuana.
That's the last I heard too.
I think Sue had mentioned something about that Sue's gonna be the new handle now.
Two for you to sign, sir.
Well, then he can write, then, we don't, then we wouldn't need Sue there, and he can write after the outcome, but after the outcome of the hearing. Then, I think we'll have to send him a letter and formalize it.
And that may change too, as time progresses, Larry may get all of his draft stuff done and then start handing it off to, you know, like Sue and any of the other representatives. Because Glenn has to get going here, should we look at the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the Monday, May twenty ninth meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Anybody opposed? So be it.
Now, um, do you wanna go back to review all the bylaws that we were working and what Sue, Susan Wester came up with at the next meeting?
Wasn't that your recommendation in the email?
It was.
That we wait until she is here?
But I didn't hear back from anybody.
Oh, we were supposed to respond?
I guess back saying it sounds like a good idea.
You did, yeah.
Oh.
You did, but.
I thought it was a good idea. The last type, the last type right after.
I thought it was a great idea, but I thought we'd make that decision at the, at our formal.
Here.
Good call. Mental to look if he does not come.
Okay, yeah, the next, the next, if she's gonna come at the next meeting, yeah, let's.
Okay. Okay, I'll put that on.
The agenda along with.
An agenda, I mean.
Reviewing any, um, applicants that may be interested in either.
Filling the seat.
Filling the seat and or, um, taking minutes. So, with that being said, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Meeting is now adjourned, six thirty three P M.